Good evening. Welcome to our annual reorganization meeting of the Board of Education for the Tuckahoe Union Free School District. Today is Tuesday, July 7th, 2020. I would like to just take a moment to introduce myself. My name is Robin Dunn and I am the new district clerk here at Tuckahoe. Please stand so we can say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, into the vault of liberty and justice as all.
I will start the meeting with nominations and election of the board president. Are there any nominations?
Um, this is very hard to see. I'd like to nominate Pete Casson for president.
Five seconds. Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Laura Benke for vice president.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. I will now administer the oath of office. I, Pete Casson, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of president for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, town of Eastchester, county of Westchester, state of New York, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
I, Laura Benke, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will willfully discharge the duties of vice president for the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, town of Eastchester, county of Westchester, state of New York, according to the best of my ability. Thank you. I will turn the meeting over to Peter Casson.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. And I'd like to just start off by thanking my fellow board members for entrusting me in this position. It's quite an honor and I thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. So we have two more appointments to make before we get into board comments, so maybe we'll just run right into that. So our next on our agenda is to appoint a district treasurer. So we'll get right into that. We resolve that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Faith Sparks to the position of treasurer to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, Teraz, discussion? All in favor? Number five, appoint a claims auditor. Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby appoints Michael Oliveria to the position of claims auditor to serve at the pleasure of the board for the 2020-2021 school year at the annual rate of pay of $10,790. Do I have a motion? Laura, Teraz, second. All in favor? Okay. So now we move into comments of the board. Teraz, you want to start us off?
Sure. So I'm happy to be back in the library, sitting six feet apart from everybody. I think it's a step in the right direction. I want to congratulate Lori Gerald and welcome her to the Board of Education. I think you're going to be a huge asset and bring a lot to the table, so we're super excited for the year ahead. I also want to congratulate Dr. Goodman, who now has her doctorate, so congratulations. A lot of hard work, a lifelong learner, and exceptional leader for us. So I'm looking forward to working with the administrators, reopening school in a very safe way for our kids, our teachers and staff. I want to make sure that we do what is best for everybody and that we make our decisions based on what we know scientifically to be true and what will be in the best interest of our kids developmentally. I think the one thing we've learned through COVID is that teachers and what they do in the classroom cannot be easily replicated. So I'm hoping that we are back in the classroom soon for everybody and I hope everyone's having a happy and healthy summer. That's it for me.
Great. Cynthia?
Okay. As always, Teraz takes a lot of the things. Congratulations again to Pete and Laura and Dr. Goodman. And Lori, I can't see you down there, but I agree. I think she's going to be a great asset to this board, brings a lot, lot of, to the table that would actually really help us. And like Teraz, it is very good to be back here. A little awkward, though, I said. It's hard, like, being, when you're doing Zoom so much and then to be live. It felt like a little socially awkward, so trying to get acclimated into that. And I have to ditto the same thing, saying I'm crossing my fingers and hoping that we can get everyone back in the building in a safe way. And I look forward to the year ahead.
Laura?
Welcome back, everybody. Welcome to our new district clerk, Robin. She hit the ground running and look forward to working with you. Thank you. It's been a challenging year, certainly, and for our district and for our staff. And so I hope everybody is finding some ways to relax, enjoy the summer before we dive back into how to reopen. I'd like to congratulate Pete on his reelection and also thank him for taking on the job of board president. It's no small task, so thank you. I look forward to working together. And congratulations to Lori Gerald for her welcome to the board. Really looking forward to working together, so we're excited to keep moving in a good direction. Of course, congratulations to our new Dr. Goodman. She clearly shows both in her running of the district and in her personal life that she's committed to education and so happy for you. I'm sure it was a tremendous undertaking, so congratulations. And lastly, I just want to say that, you know, it's going to be a challenging year. Myself, as a board member, will work very hard to support and provide whatever we can as a board to the administration and to all staff members and to our superintendent. This is going to be a very challenging and trying time, but I think we have a great team and I look forward to working together. So the best of luck with that and I will end there. Thank you.
So I did want to formally introduce Lori Gerald and congratulate her election and we're really excited to have her on the board and welcome, Lori. And you're up.
I am delighted to be here, serving in this capacity, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you now in this way. I think we've always worked together in some shape or form, so it's nice to be doing that in a different aspect. And I look forward to serving the students and the school community in this capacity and I will do my best to make you all glad that I was chosen for this seat. Thank you again. Congratulations, Dr. Goodman. I love that. Hopefully I'll be soon behind you and congratulations to Robin, congratulations Pete and Laura. Great team of people here.
Yeah.
I have to go again.
You have to go again?
Yeah.
Before me? Okay, you go again before I go.
Just because I didn't congratulate you on your reelection and that you took presidency and we appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
And congratulations, Laura. Welcome, Robin and Faith Sparks. She's returning, right?
Yes, she's.
Yes. So, and so I think we're hitting the ground running, so that's great.
Yep. Right, so.
If I forgot anybody, if I did, I did.
Thank you. So I'll go last and kind of echo a lot of what was said, welcome, a lot of welcomes. Welcome, Lori, like I already said, and welcome, Robin. Welcome, Chris is here as well. So a lot, a lot of new faces. I know, it's easy. So it's kind of exciting and I am kind of excited to be back in person. I think it's a good, a good way to start the year off. I think it was time. We're still obviously concerned and we're still going to be safe and we're going to be smart, but it's time to get back to work in a real way. So I'm happy to be here, excited to be here. So, and we are, I think, we had our first executive session yesterday where Lori was sworn in before and I'm really excited about this team. And I did want to also mention the absence of Michelle Licio, which is kind of strange to have a board meeting without Michelle Licio here. It's kind of a weird vibe. At our last board meeting, we, our officially last board meeting, which was an eight o'clock in the morning meeting, we all kind of said our goodbyes to Michelle, which I don't think was very well watched because it was eight o'clock in the morning. So I just wanted to mention her and thank her again for her service and all the years that she put in. And this is probably the first time she's hearing this, if she's watching, but we're going to be inviting her back in September to be properly recognized for her service. So hopefully she'll take that invitation up. She will, I'll make sure she does. And then I also, did also want to congratulate Ms. Goodman on achieving her doctorate and on behalf of the board. I wanted to present you with these flowers to recognize, to recognize that amazing achievement. It just goes to show how good of a choice we made in selecting you as a superintendent because you continue to progress. So congratulations, Dr. Goodman. So I too am very, very excited about this year. COVID's kind of a bummer for a lot of reasons, but one being that I think we were all excited about starting this year and really hitting the ground running with, with a new superintendent in place and the capital project sort of coming to an end and now we have this thing to deal with. So it's another obstacle, but we'll get through it. We're a strong community. We have a strong administrative staff. We'll get through it and once we are through it, I'm really excited about really getting to that strategic plan and really getting, getting it actioned and getting it moving forward. So excited about that. So with that, we have a very, very long agenda because it is a reorg meeting, so there's a lot to get to. So I say we just get right into it. And the first thing we're going to do is, number two on the, on the agenda is superintendent's presentation on the responsive return plan, so we'll get right into that.
Thank you, Mr. Casson, and hello to everybody. I am going to move my seat to the podium where also people can make questions if anybody wants to speak to the public. Just so that everybody knows, we are socially distancing in here. The reason the board has a masks office, we are six feet away from each other. And I will put my mask on as I walk past the few people that are there. And the board can sit over here, there are seats for them.
Before I get started, I just wanted to thank Chris Keough for helping me with this, our new director of curriculum instruction and technology, and you'll see a lot of him, and the administrative team, all our assistant principals and principal, principals, but especially John Marash and Bart Linehan. We have been working very hard on this and it's not that we're not going to work with everybody, but we wanted to start a process where we knew what we could do instead of imagining things that we already know that we can't do so that when we get our committees together, we have our questions and we hit the ground running. So I really thank you for this opportunity to present the ways in which we are planning for the fall reopening. Over the past few weeks, we have coordinated the end of the 2020 school year, which involves celebrations and honoring milestones in new ways. Our teachers transition instantly to distance learning. Our students work diligently through the twists and turns of our country's tunnel. Now, we look ahead to the fall with the optimism and idealism that brought us all to this profession and with care and concern for our schools and that we, that will drive our decision-making. It's good to think about how we got here because it seems like it was a very long road and confusing. And as you may remember, our schools were among the first in the country to be closed when the governor deemed our area a containment zone to prevent the spread of a coronavirus cluster in New Rochelle. We were asked to close for cleaning and disinfecting and we were expected to reopen on March 25th. This date was later extended to March 31st as part of the New York Paws Act, later to April 15th, then April 29th, and lastly through the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year. Given the release of information and the unpredictability of the coronavirus spread, long-term planning was difficult. However, our staff pivoted to providing instruction through technology to the best of our ability. Because our district pioneered the one-to-one initiative among the region, we were well-positioned. And thanks to the impressive efforts of our dedicated teachers, we were able to continue instruction and support our students. We learned a lot and we are prepared to make improvements, but amidst this uncertainty and confusion, as you can see by even the review of the year, our staff rose to the All this planning is made in consideration of and movement to Tuckahoe's new normal. This planning involves returning, reimagining, and revamping. In returning, we are considering multiple paths for fall of 2020. This involves considering both knowns and unknowns of the weeks ahead. Our unwavering priority is safety and we are driven by the values laid out in our strategic plan: social and emotional learning, diverse needs of learners, contemporary teaching and learning, and professional learning. To reimagine, we need stakeholders to re-envision the way in which schooling takes place. In a world gripped by a deadly pandemic with the capacity to spread easily, we need to reimagine what our classrooms and community traditions look like. Lastly, we need to revamp. We need to institute practices that are responsive and deliver on the systems we developed during the re-imagining and returning phase. We cannot simply do school the way we knew it. In adversity, there is the ability to grow and thrive. While we await the official guidance from the New York State Education Department, which is expected on or around July 15th, we have used other resources in our planning discussions. Again, we are one of the states that have no direction right now, so we try to anticipate what we might expect in an official New York State drafted plan. Their guidance for higher education may provide a preview. Among the major points in the document for higher education is the recommendation that physical distancing is promoted and that if it cannot be maintained, a face covering must be worn. New York State requires health screenings and frequent communication such as emails and postings around campus. The guidance for universities and colleges also requires heightened hygiene, cleaning, and disinfecting considerations. Other state plans, and there are plenty of them. I just put up the states that are nearby or Massachusetts, which is doing something different in terms of social distancing. Neighboring states have released plans that may give us some expectations of what we might ultimately see from New York State in a few weeks. New Jersey advocates flexibility. Massachusetts is aiming for full-time and Connecticut is expecting all students will return in the fall. Questions about distancing, scheduling, screening, and PPE were all addressed differently from state to state. So while there are no firm answers that emerge from a review of these documents, we are able to anticipate the framework of what we may expect. We have reached out to different partnerships our district has established. Our work with the Ulteris Consulting Group and our new work with Ed Elements has provided blueprints and roadmaps as we develop our plans. Southern Westchester BOCs and our professional networks have brought in the conversation to include other leaders in our region. The New York State Department of Health and our relationships with local government, health practitioners, and law enforcement are joined with us in our commitment to keeping our community safe. Now, the American Academy of Pediatrics. This is important to realize because they are the experts in children's, in children's physical health. The American Academy of Pediatrics issued a statement in strong support of a full reopening of schools. In their writing, they detailed the public health importance of schools, including nutrition, health, and child safety monitoring. They place value on socialization and normalization the school day provides. The report cites evidence that the transmission of the virus is very uncommon among young students, pointing to the rarity of outbreaks in childcare centers that remained open during the mass closures. Again, we do not know how this report will impact the development of the New York State guidelines, but it has been closely reviewed by our leadership and will be reviewed in the development of our plans. Ultimately, we anticipate we will need to prepare for three different options and these options we may need to prepare for at different times during the school year and that's why it's important that we have them in place. This is similar to what Massachusetts has mandated. We want to create a plan to respond to low spread, minimal spread, and substantial spread. At the height of the coronavirus outbreak in our region and neighboring New York City, hospital resources were strained and the number of cases were growing at a dizzying rate. The governor closed schools and prompted schools to offer distance learning. In this flow chart, you will see this represented by the red designation. The response can be modified whether or not the closure is targeted, short-term, or extended. So at times we may need to close a school for a short time because of an outbreak. It may be targeted to certain classes and grades, or it may be what we saw this year. If the spread is contained to minimal or moderate transmission, you see the emergence of mixed models in which there may be staggering schedules, limited use of the buildings, and the use of remote learning. This is represented by the hybrid, by the yellow designation and is often referred to as the hybrid model. Lastly, if there is evidence of low or even more promising no spread, we can return to the traditional form of schooling. This will weave in new learnings such as increased hand washing and public health protocols, but will return us to the typical day school, school day that we love. This is represented by the green model in the chart and is, of course, our ideal scenario. In these early stages, we wanted to get a sense of our stakeholders' perspectives. We issued a survey to gather feedback from the community members and to learn about concerns and preferences for the upcoming school year. We asked them what went well. In reviewing the quantitative data that came from families' written responses, we found patterns in these responses. Here we are sharing some of the threads that rose to the top as we poured over responses. What we learned from reading responses to this prompt: many families felt the workload was appropriate, citing the flexibility and organizational supports as particularly helpful. Although it is worth noting that some families asked for more work, additional challenges, and enhanced rigor, some asked for less, but overwhelmingly it was supported that the workload was appropriate given what we were handed. Teachers were mentioned frequently in this area, sometimes by name. Teachers reached out to families over the phone and through emails. Families responded how much they valued all these opportunities to connect with their teachers. For example, one respondent commented, "Teachers established a routine that was easy to follow and we greatly appreciated how they continued exposing the class to new content, learning experiences, despite the clear disruption." Many parents commented on the live instruction was what they really particularly valued. The term emerged frequently as one respondent said, "The live sessions were the most beneficial." In our next slide, we will point out the amount of live instruction was an area which families would like to see us improve. We are happy to hear the way in which our families appreciated the elements of response, our response to the coronavirus. We are looking to build on these areas as we move forward. Areas of improvement. There were helpful suggestions on areas we can improve if we were able, if we were required to continue remote learning in some form. What we have learned from reading responses to this prompt: a need for a longer schedule was also communicated as in this comment that asked, "Why can't students follow their regular schedules with teachers holding Zoom sessions during a regularly scheduled time?" Many families wanted to see more of an eight-to-three structure to their child's day if we were required to continue remote learning in any way. Many families called for more live instruction. One respondent said, "We would definitely need more live instruction." This was a common refrain. While many parents appreciated and applauded teachers' efforts to provide live instruction, there was a great deal of request for that being the main mode of any distance learning programming. Another area of improvement was clarity of instruction also emerged as a pattern with one parent commenting, "The level and quality of teaching that his teachers were at in the classroom were not maintained at all with distance learning." Families noted the challenges of remote learning and how difficult it is to replicate the instructional practices of Tuckahoe teachers through a Zoom call. However, families asked in our survey for us to build on the best practices of some particular classes and offer more quality instruction across the board. As we pivoted to this form of instruction last year with very little notice, we anticipated challenges, obstacles, and roadblocks. The feedback in this survey has provided us a great deal of information that we can use moving forward. Now, concerns with coming back. Among the concerns was what to do with children at home, what happens if a student gets sick, how will we control the virus, and what to do with all the school that is missed when we have to shift to remote learning. The word cloud captures some of the words that emerged most in response to this prompt. What we have learned from reading responses to this prompt include: there are real concerns of future spikes, a second wave, and the potential of an overlap between the coronavirus pandemic and the seasonal flu. Many are concerned about masks, social distancing, and the greater community's willingness to participate in these recommended safety and hygiene practices. There were also concerns about individual health issues such as individuals who are immune compromised or live with those who are. We are fully aware that there is a great deal of concern and uncertainty as we look ahead to the fall. The concerns at each family vary, as Tuckahoe families should know that they have a partner in the Tuckahoe schools. In looking at the qualitative survey prompts, we learned that more than half of the respondents indicated they would feel mostly or very comfortable sending their child to school in the fall. It is important to note that in these planning stages, we are giving consideration to the fact that there are some students or family members with whom they live who may have health conditions that prohibit their attendance in school. So while 11% of respondents indicated they did not feel at all comfortable returning to school in the fall and 27% were a little comfortable, we would try to accommodate families and their unique needs. Additional quantitative, quantitative survey prompts uncovered that more than 75% of respondents indicated that they would feel mostly or very comfortable with their child wearing a mask to school. This is refreshing as the New York State Guidelines for Higher Education mandated face coverings for any scenario where a six-feet distance could not be maintained. In a fluid and dynamic environment like school, it is expected that there will be a need for students to wear masks at different points throughout the day and in classrooms where we will not be able to maintain the six-foot difference, distancing. we will not be able to maintain the six-foot difference, distancing. This was a question about if we were required to implement the hybrid model, both the in-person and in-school and the remote learning, what would parents like? In the instance that we are open on some kind of hybrid model, which I personally think could be very likely, if we have to decrease the number of students that are allowed in school by 50%, but we'll know pretty soon, and at some point possibly, even if it's something else, which would again involve a combination of in-person instruction in the school building with remote learning taking place at home, we asked families to rank their preference from least to most preferred. Families differed in how they ranked them, but here is a summary of those unwedded findings that are helping to frame our planning process. As you can see, the most preferred option among the different scheduling modules was the third option, A-B alternating. This is a model which students are in school the most. The benefits of this model are that we are able to reduce population density in our buildings by 50%, and we see our students on-site more regularly, so that would be two to three days a week on-site. The middle model was considered the most, the second-most preferred, where students meet on Mondays and Wednesdays, or Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then possibly on Fridays. This creates a bit more consistency for the scheduling of working families, though I can see how the A-B model, we can do it, make it consistent too. And one of the benefits of this model is that Friday becomes an option for the district to invite students on campus who require additional support or additional academic challenge that can only be administered in a very small group. The least preferred option was blocking in-person by the week. There are two versions of this model, one in which Friday is an intervention challenge day and one in which is not. Students attend school for a full week, and they learn at home for the full weeks. There are benefits of this in terms of, you know, you get a cluster of students for five days in a row, but also you lose the flow the next week. So that was the least preferred. Looking ahead, with all this information and in anticipation hopefully of a July 15 release from New York State Education Department K-12 Guidelines, we begin to look ahead. How do we support shifting in thinking around Takahoe schooling in the face of a national crisis? How do we best prepare our facilities for safe reopening? What can our staff do to best support our students and families? One of the things that we are learning is this shift in knowledge, and as you come back to work and students come back to school, you really start to live the shift. Ultimately, in the face of the crisis, we need to foster shifts in knowledge. The graph here is similar to Lewis and Shine's Phases of Organizational Change, in which large organizations confronted with change move through a process to get to the new normal. First, we learn. This involves experiencing and acquiring a new concept. In essence, we need to unfreeze what we had come to expect. This process can be hard to facilitate, or it can be a process forced on us. In this situation, our community was thrown a curveball that was something we did not expect. The process was something that we didn't even learn until we heard concepts like social distancing and flattening the curve. We learned through state and federal government press briefings, sometimes just on the news, and reports from epidemiologists and pediatricians. Next, we are unlearning. This can entail erasing previous learning and replacing with more relevant concepts. In this phase, we institute the change. The change would be the phased reopening, in which we respond to the delicate nature of our public health crisis. It means we stand six feet from our colleagues and classmates. During this time, when the spread is difficult to manage, we wear masks as we move through the halls. We conduct meetings through Zoom, and we close the building to visitors, and we redesign or cancel special events. None of this is easy, and our reopening team that we will develop will be, as it's forming, and the Takahoe team, the administrative team, and this team will be ready to support us through the process of unlearning what we have come to expect and change it. Lastly, we relearn. In many ways, we refreeze. We have adapted a previous understanding to pick up a new concept. We now understand that at different times during the year, we may need to institute restrictions to promote public health and stem the local spread of coronavirus. This becomes part of how we do things. We work together in supporting this new normal, whatever it is. We understand that we are not going back at any time soon to the way things were. We need to be prepared for that, and that we are moving towards a better and safer way of public schooling and looking at a better way of education. Never again do we find ourselves caught off-guard by this virus. We have given time to proper stages of our shifts in knowledge and found ourselves, in the end, at a place that is responsive and safe, responsive to education and safe for students and staff. Next step. As we facilitate these shifts in knowledge, there are next steps on the horizon. When the survey was distributed, the community was generous in their sharing of insights and experiences. We plan to review the data on a more granular level, breaking it up by school and grade and allowing building leadership teams to respond to takeaways more relevant to their buildings and age bands. We have just sent a survey to our teachers, so we can learn more about ways in which we can support them when they return to the buildings. When July 15 comes, we expect we will be prepared, given some of our early discussions, reading, and research into these matters. However, when New York State releases its guidelines, we will spend time reviewing them and following up to the best of our ability on questions and concerns. We will collaborate further with our partners, seeking out any clarification and learning for best practices. While we wish that the July 15 date were sooner, and we hope that we get something on July 15, this will mark a pivot in our planning process. We can then assemble subcommittees thoughtfully, with teams of stakeholders that are equipped to respond to the elements presented in New York State's plan. So when we send out that letter, we are really looking for people who have expertise. So pediatricians need apply, and other people who understand how schools are set up, maybe architects. People need to tell us why they will be beneficial to this committee, because we don't really have much time, and we want to do our best job. But again, since we have not waited for the plan, we have engaged leadership in this research and collaboration around these issues, and I do really thank our administrators. Our subcommittees will be well-resourced, because we have already collected information for them to see, and I'm sure they have others for us, and will help us divine the different parts of our plan with input from a diverse group of faculty and community members. Lastly, we will finalize and present our plan to the Board of Education and then share it with the larger community. All along, we will invite community input and ultimately will be responsible for providing the plan to the State Education Department. However, once we have reached this stage in the process, I am confident that our process will have been comprehensive, sensitive, and responsive, and that the plan promotes student safety and student education. As you can see, the path forward contains uncertainty. When preparing for battle, President Eisenhower has said that plans are useless, but that planning was indispensable. Takahoe leaders have learned a great deal through this process of researching and hearing from our community. While we await clear guidance from the state, we have put in place systems that allow us to be both proactive and responsive. We are united in our desire to keep students safe, to have students learn, and we appreciate this opportunity to share where we can with community in the process. We look forward to further communication. Thank you. If the board has any questions, if you want to go back up.
I know I have a few, but I won't go first. Anybody have questions? Want to go first?
I mean, I guess it's hard, because until July 15, until something comes out, it's hard to know, but I think it's good to see that you're looking at different ideas depending on what comes down. So I'm sure once the decisions are made from the state, I'll have a lot more questions. Like, I was going to ask things like the number of kids in each classroom, but then again, it depends on the size of the rooms and all those kind of things. So I guess I'm going to wait till then, but I'm glad to see that administration is looking at all different models and ideas so that you're prepared for whatever comes our way next week.
So as an administrator, you know how uncertain it has been. It looks like New York State will do something about social distancing and perhaps, you know, less people allowed in the building, so we might not have, we might not be able to do something where, you know, everybody comes in, and it also may be from the Department of Health, not the safest thing to do. I haven't seen any plan so far that has set hard and fast six feet. It says we strive to six feet. Every plan seems to say that, because we have some of our classrooms that are smaller. But our principals have been doing a great job with our director of facilities, laying things out. I also want to thank Ellen McDonald, Dr. McDonald at this time. Her son, who maybe will come present, has created this app. You might want to use it in your schools, and it seems to be able to figure out how many kids can fit in a classroom, giving them the six feet. So we are meeting with him tomorrow. We met with him once, but we kind of changed what we gave him, so we might really, I mean, we were nervous, but it looks like he will be a great help. And he's only 18 years old, so it's pretty cool.
So I was just wondering, thank you, Dr. McDonald. I was just wondering with some of the things that you mentioned, so one was the cleaning protocols, there was screening that you mentioned, and then you showed us the three things, the third being that there's lower no spread. So all of those things, my thought was, is that something that, obviously, next week you'll get answers, right? But is that something as we're doing, is that state-directed, or is that something that we as a district?
So it seems like the governor, from what I've seen so far, he has said he is the one that can close schools, he is the one, you know, so it's not just State Education Department. Of course, it's Department of Health also. You know, he could come in and say, "I want everybody in school to just wear a mask." But he, from what we see, and that's why I've been trying to look at the higher education plan, because I was told that that will probably, I mean, people think that that could be something like what he will do, you know, with us. But we won't know, and we, no matter what, we need those three plans, because, you know, they talk about it, and the parents worry about a second wave or a spike. Then we could quickly move to some kind of, some kind of hybrid, because we know how to do it. If we have a class of kids that are sick, we could move to all online, because we're better at it. So, you know, sometimes, the way I see it, sometimes you'll have to close down a group, a class, you know, if there's some kind of outbreak. You know, what's been great is that we've had summer school this summer with the special education kids. A shout-out to everybody who's teaching there, and a shout-out to the kids who are wearing their face masks most of the time. I just am so incredibly proud of them, because these are our special education students, not the ones who are coming one hour here. These are the ones who are the full-day students. And, you know, so that makes me hopeful. Sometimes people think that kids won't wear masks. Remember, 75% of the parents thought their kids would, and one of the things that they were concerned about is that other people won't follow the proper hygiene. So we have some positive, positive feedback on if we can come back in a better, you know, with more kids, but we have to wait, and no matter what, like I was saying before, I think we're going to have to pivot, or at least prepare to pivot, so we never get caught like we did this time. We did the best we could, but, and then always knowing, you know, this date we might come back, this date we might come back, now we'll be ready. If we come back, we have a hybrid plan, or we have an in-person plan. We have to get that in place, and we have to give the teachers the training to get better at using all this technology. They did a good job, but they're going to need more training. And we will talk about that, too, as how we're going to do that when we get our groups together.
And just my last question. So the teachers would be here every day?
Yes.
Because you're just different students, right? Fifty-fifty kind of?
So, yes. That's the way we envision the A-B day, so if we went A-B, which it seems to be the favorite, is that the teachers would be here every day. The other students can watch it online when they're not here, so they're not, some parents were like, "Well, what's going on when they're home?" Well, we go home when they're on, home is instruction too, and they would get homework like everybody, so it will be either in-class, there will be continuity of instruction, and there won't be one group getting something and one group getting something else. If we go all distance learning, if we're allowed to have everybody in the building, they could be here too, and the students can learn at home, so that they have all their resources here. You know, and the full day is, it should be what it is, you know?
Then they're home, so I guess the childcare comes into play. If a parent that's going out to work, but the child is home every other day, then?
Right, for the child in the district that's home every other day, and that's one of the things why I wrote a letter very early, because I want parents to start to think about the possibility for childcare. Working parents, one parent wrote to me, "Please keep in mind that if my kid's not in every day, I need a consistent schedule." So if we went to the every other day, I don't think Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday switches. I think some kids go on Friday one week. If a kid misses Monday, it's a holiday, then they get that Friday. I think there's a way with the A-B to have consistency, because you have to get a babysitter. At least you know when you have to get one. And truly, when we get into operations, it's going to be the same thing with transportation.
And also to consider on that note, let me jump over here, but just because you mentioned it, particularly with Cottle, I think, because of our kids, also making sure siblings are on the same schedule.
Right.
Right, because that's going to be difficult for parents to have to manage two schedules.
I did have a parent email me that I, said she forgot to put that in the survey.
Yeah.
And she absolutely said that. And the way we're thinking of splitting the program, like down the alphabet, except for those middle L, M, N, you know, then we look at who the siblings are, it should be siblings on the bus if they have the same last name.
Right, right.
And I think that is very important, and then, like, people can't really say, you know, I want to be with this kid or that kid. We just have to do the best we can, because siblings really, first of all, siblings can sit next to each other on the bus, so that gives us a little more space. And again, as we reimagine, we have to throw out what we saw before and come up with what's best for the kids, and that's just our job. But as the board, we might have to rethink, you know, if we can't do it, bus stops, and, you know, who goes on the bus, and, you know, unfortunately, we might have to think that. If all kids wear a mask on the bus, from my understanding, social distancing won't be as much of a problem, plus breaking the kids in half, that's why A-B is so good, you have half of the kids on the bus. So, and I think some parents are going to opt out. I think it may not, as I'm working it through, it may not be as serious as far as transportation. Right now, we have, we're very lucky, because we have a company that we secured. Some companies have people who are compromised maybe, and they don't feel comfortable driving, I'm hearing, but our company seems to be doing fine.
I guess we'll just go in order. So obviously, there's a lot of questions, but I think, as Cynthia mentioned, I'm sure some of the, some of the questions about things like how extracurriculars be handled, sports and things of that nature, and after-school activities, all of that, but I assume that probably hasn't been worked out yet, and you probably want to see which scenario we get, and then work those plans through the subcommittees, right? So that's not, that's premature for that.
We're doing things, so the subcommittees are going to come up with, you know, some questions, you know, there'll be health subcommittee, you know, they may be concerned about, you know, and then they can report out about, you know, what are the protocols, and I'm hoping to get physicians, and, you know, our school physician has been wonderful, by the way, with everything we've been doing for summer school, everything we've been doing all along. A shout-out to Dr. Kelgaris. I would like her to be, you know, maybe even on the steering committee, because that's really important. But some of these things are not answered. We just wanted to come further and get community input, then be dreaming, like, half-day and all of that, there are problems with buses. I mean, some of the things you can dream up are not that simple. So I really appreciate the administrative team, starting from the big picture, the sanitizer, and going, and then, you know, breaking it up, you know?
But, but the goal will be?
The goal would be getting the impact, and also going over, so there'll be an operation, so somebody will be talking, will be talking about disinfectant and how that's going to work, and people will have questions so that we can answer that, because that's a big concern.
Right.
And then we will also have Lee looking at this, seeing how much this all will cost, and what we have to give up to pay for it. And that's unfortunate for this year. And what we have to give up to pay for it. And that's unfortunate for this year, but we have to be ready for that.
Sure. Yes.
Because the most important thing is we get kids in school. We have to be committed to that.
So whichever model we do, it sounds like, I just want to reiterate, it sounds like whichever model we do, the goal will be to have classes or groups of children together in their learning. In other words, it's not gonna be an A-B instruction. It'll be one course of instruction that maybe half the kids are watching from home, one half the kids are watching from here. Or all at home, whatever it may be. But the idea will be to have
Continuity.
Continuity amongst the classes. And then just to clarify, in a model in which we come back but distance, the kids will be expected to wear masks when they're moving around. When they're at their desks in a distance, they can take their masks off.
That's what we understand.
That's the goal.
From the higher education and what the, what we've read, Department of Health DC, that you can do that. But some of our classes, you know, I don't want to make parents not realize that there will be some classes that are smaller. And we, we don't want to leave, we don't want to go three days a week.
Right.
We don't want kids to come in one day.
That scenario may have, be asking kids to leave their mask on.
So some kids may have to wear a mask all day. And there was some, some states said masks all day. So it could be that we will have to wear it. Or it could be that the people on our health committee, who are the experts, will say something like that. So we're open. And I think, and that 75% of the parents did not have a problem with their kids wearing masks. And if we go with masks, which we will in some way, I would suggest that everybody start looking for masks that kids like. You know, we'll have a lot of breaks too. Like we know we have to have recess. We know we have to give kids a chance to breathe. You know, sometime between periods and schedule schedules. Those will all be things that we will be talking about when we meet in our groups.
So my biggest concern right now, my biggest question, knowing that all those other things have to be still be worked out. But no matter which plan we go to, unless we're totally back full time, like it's back to normal, which is very unlikely. So every other plan involves some aspect of distance learning. And you mentioned in your presentation, the survey results and the feedback about doing better at distance learning. And doing better with the live instruction, getting more live instruction, better live instruction. So what are we doing, so what are we doing to improve that? Because it seems to me, no matter what model we do, short of 100% normal, it's gonna involve some piece of that. So we know that's gonna happen. So what are we doing to make sure that we're better at that than we were last year?
We have Mr. Chris Keough here, and he will be heading up the Teaching and Learning Committee. And we will, and he has ideas already, obviously. But we also are asking, he just came. So we're asking the teachers in their survey, what do you need? One of the things, you know, just off the cuff, that might be a smart thing to do is to look at the calendar and put the superintendent's conference days at the beginning of the calendar. Because I think we can't really afford to bring in all teachers, but if we had a number of days that they could all be in, maybe cut the Christmas vacation then if we have to. But I think it's very important that we get teacher training. And maybe even on the A-B day, we take one Friday and do something, you know, because it was hard for them, the more we do distance learning. Not leaving nothing for the kids, but you know, sort of, I mean, there's ways we could do it. We know our teachers need help.
You know, the professional development in this area is the first thing that comes to mind. Second thing that comes to mind for me is what are we doing, equipment and logistics wise, in the classroom to be set up for it? Because a lot of the training, I think, or a lot of the impediments for some teachers was probably just technically dealing with their situation at home. So one benefit of coming here is that we should have that infrastructure for them already. So they just walk into their class and they're good to go.
One thing we did is we already increased the bandwidth that we have in the school because I said to Bosie's, everybody is gonna be on. Kids will be, you know, everybody's gonna be using their smart board. I mean, there are smart boards and everybody will be using their Chromebooks, both the kids home and the kids here. You know, it's just gonna be a total computer generated. Teachers will be using it. We can't, we have to have really good bandwidth. Secondly, we just bought microphones because we don't want the teacher to just rely on their microphone in their computer. We want them to be able to move around.
Right.
So it's stronger. They just came in today because we thought, let's buy them now because everybody else is gonna think of buying them, just like the PPE stuff. You have to get it, and your toilet paper. You have to get it now. So we were good with that.
And then every, every classroom will have a camera, essentially?
So what we're doing, so every classroom has a good microphone. The camera that we looked at is a camera that follows teachers. And just from talking to a few teachers, there was not great feedback with that. Because sometimes teachers want to really walk in the back of the room and they want to still show things on their smart board. And they don't necessarily want the camera to follow them around. So I haven't had, we might buy some and see how it goes and let teachers who want to use it, use it. But you can use your Chromebook to, you know, to project. And you could walk away and have it projecting, you know. So the teachers have very, they have the technology. But having the ability to even walk away from it and still talk, we want the, the microphones to be. I came right to the cameras. First of all, they're super expensive. But we could, you know, again, this is all taking away from other things. Like there's no buying of pens and pencils. I mean, like we just, you know, find, you know, find your paper. We can't, we can't spend money on that. And we might ask parents to bring in baggies because kids need their, when we go in our community, they need their own crayons. You know, they can share. There's a lot of things in this. So some will be, you know, asking parents, but some we will really have to buy, some probably, some big things. And the camera thing is still up for grabs. So when we do our community, the, our committees, we will talk about that.
I mean, in terms of what kind of cameras we're gonna get?
So the cameras are in our devices. But there are high-tech cameras that will follow the teacher around in the classroom so the kids at home can follow the teacher.
So if we don't do the motion camera, we're relying on the teacher's laptop?
Computer camera, yes.
Really? Oh, the computer camera, the one that sits on top?
They would walk around using their camera like I could, you know, or leave it here. Like remember, the kids are pretty much set up in rows. It's not like a ton of walking. Because as you saw, you know, we were so used to all of these, okay, we're getting the collaborative teaching and kids are all sitting together. We don't want them talking at each other. We want to have the space between them talking. So it might look, it might look as conducive as teachers walking around all the time. And we have some other ideas too. But the cameras are something that we first considered right away. We were strong components of it. We put in, we saw how much they cost. There are a couple of things that'll cost a lot. One of the things is if we get, and when we get into our committee, if we get something that will screen everybody's fever walking in the door will be a lot better than taking kids' temperatures. And then we could also look from the health and safety, is that the best way to screen kids? So there's, there's a lot of questions. Like I do not have all the answers.
Yeah, no, I know, I know.
But it is, I was.
It's early, but it's also late too. Like, you know, like it's
I know, because it's late.
School will be here before you know it.
Some districts are ordering cameras. And what my suggestion is, let's order some.
Right.
Let's get started and see how it goes.
Yeah. It's just a shame that we don't have guidance from the state yet.
I just wanted to, because I know you're gonna go that way. What I did want to point out is I think the community should know that there are some districts that aren't even giving families the option. Like if you choose, I'm a little weary of my student going to school. They're saying, well, if you don't send them to school, your option is to homeschool. So I think that Tuckahoe is giving families that option, that if you're, if you choose that, you could still be part of your class with your peers and stay home. So I think that's important to note. There are districts that have said that.
Yeah, I know that.
Like we're telling you have to come if you choose not to.
It's more the other.
Yeah. And we are, we are really, wanna be responsive to our parents. Because not everybody has the same level of confidence in this. And we just don't want to force people who don't want, even people who don't want to work. You know, they'll have to take a leave, but you know, it's a choice.
Okay. Teres?
Yes.
So I think when we get back our teacher's survey, I think teachers want to come back too.
I have a few questions. First was, just to circle back on the professional development. Because I do think that part of the difficulty in transitioning to distance learning was because the teachers were really uncomfortable and did not feel prepared. And in looking at the school calendar, we have those two days before the Labor Day weekend. Like have we thought about flipping those into professional development days? So like they get that intense?
That's what I was just saying. We need to front load the professional development days. And we would have to change the calendar. School could start later for kids. But we need the time for teachers to come in, take the other professional development days out of the calendar and put them up front. Because teachers really are gonna need time to learn and to practice the technology. Secondly, probably if we go every other day, we're gonna need some time built in there for teacher learning, probably. If we go distance learning, we have to, you know, we have to do it live. It is what works. And not everybody is comfortable. We need to be able to go in their classrooms and coach them. And we need to, we need, we need to, we need to step it up. We're not the only district. Most districts weren't live full day, but that's where we're going to. And I think the teachers, as they tried it, they really were afraid of it. But it really is easier than what they tried to put together. It's better for the kids. And it's really hard to be videotaping yourself for a lesson. That could take just hours.
Right.
Much easier for me to give you a speech than watch myself. I would do it over and over.
Right, agreed. And I think that, anyway, I think that's important. My other point, my other, my next question was just circling back to the childcare issue. Will task run in the building for after-school care for those families who use it?
So I haven't had the meeting. So I put off the meeting with task because I wanted to make sure that we had an idea. So we, we are having a meeting with task. You know, at one point, we thought, well, maybe they could run during the day, but we really need like all their classrooms. And we need to have their classrooms cleaned also. So we'd have to make up some kind of a, because we're using like every bit of space. But it would be, it would be nice on the every other day that parents at least had that. So if we could do it.
Well, I think it's a huge thing for some, I know from sitting on the task board that there were, I think about 100 when I left that used it like every day. So a lot of parents can't
Right.
You know, be at the bus at three or pick up or whatever.
So if you had that every, they couldn't, I couldn't have everybody come in if they did it before and after school because they asked, we talked about it for another way to do it too. If every other day task was available, that would give the parents two or three days a week that they really can work or do whatever they need to do. So it is good. And we are, I just asked them to wait till we had the New York State guidance, but that's been a long wait. They understood that because one of the people on the task board is an administrator in another school district. So she totally understood. But task would be good. There are other organizations down in Tuckahoe that came to me, E-CAP. You know, there might be things we could do in the village also for kids to, you know, give them places and spaces to help with their homework on the off days. You know, we have to really think about the fact that parents don't all have the ability to have somebody stay with their kids. That's why we would love everybody to be in every day. And, you know, we don't know how it's gonna work out. Possibly more kids will opt out. Maybe, you know, there are some ideas I have that maybe we can get more online courses through some other institutions that some kids might like to take. You know, they might like to take AP Chemistry Online and not come into school. You know, so we, we could think of ways to get more kids in and some kids, some high school kids, possibly. I've been speaking to a lot of kids, and not from here, but kids I know in my family in high school or college. And they're like, you know, some of them think they can learn well at home. And, you know, the parents can say, if it doesn't work, you go into school. And so there are ways that we can probably get more kids in than we might think right now.
Okay. So when we talk about the age, the American Academy of Pediatrics said pretty strongly that kids under 12 were the least risk. So for contracting it, for spreading it, for everything. So are we looking at, instead of just A-B for the entire district, like bringing the younger kids in more often? Because they, I feel that they are the ones that also need the in-classroom instruction the most and clearly are the least health risk. When you look at the 13 to 18-year-old group, they have a slightly higher rate of transmission. So I was just wondering.
There are some districts that, well, districts, there are some plans that look at elementary only. Where the elementary ends up coming in every day and taking over the middle school. And then everybody else has to go online. I just, I just think that we're looking at other options where some grades come in more because we think K to 2, John spoke about that, could use more education because that's when they're learning to read. But those options put some kids in different kinds of classrooms because we're using every single space. I think that, you know, if you have a kid in middle school and high school, you might think differently, especially middle school kids. A lot of kids struggle in middle school, really. That is a big jump to things being different. And I've seen it in the district, in this district.
Well, middle schoolers are still on like seventh and sixth or 12 and under, technically.
That's true.
Right. So you could like, I'm not saying that the high school or middle school kids shouldn't come in because I think they absolutely should. And they have social emotional learning needs. But to have them be on an A-B and then have like K through two or K through three, whatever it is that Mr. Murash and Mr. Kilgallen, you know, come up with to have them in more often.
We looked at that, and that's a possibility for K to 2. Mr. Murash worked out some magic today.
I'm sorry, that's a really good point.
You know, I don't want to, I shouldn't say, if I drop this thing one more time.
It's because you chalk with your hands.
Yeah. Now, I was gonna say, it's a really good point, but I guess at the end of the day though, it may not be up to us because if the state's guidance is for, may restrict that. So the gate, the state's guidance may say that all students K through 12 need to be socially distancing or need to be whatever it may be. So we may not have the luxury.
We do see a lot of plans.
Based on, I don't think it's gonna be as clear and cut. I think there's gonna be room for interpretation. And I think that the AAP and the CDC, the AAP in pediatrics is like our governing body, right? That's like our bible. And so I think the fact that they've come together and made a pretty clear joint statement of recommendations and they've looked at hundreds of articles that have been written internationally. We also have to look at what's happening in Europe now and the fact that testing, tracing, all of that has really slowed and minimized spreads in countries that were hit very hard. But that's obviously for subcommittees and so forth.
And the thing with K to 2, we have looked at it, and it's a possibility, beginning everybody else every other day.
I just wanted to mention one thing, just thinking about like that A-B and splitting kids. I mean, school, yes, for the education, they need to come in. But the social emotional piece, I'm thinking, like that, they, they want to see their friends. They want to do things like that because they've been locked up so, so long. So in doing that A-B, was it ever considered, like say, middle, all middle schoolers come the same day and all high schools come the same day? So at least they still have that social emotional piece where they are interacting with their peers.
We have thought of it, but our teachers are, you know, we just are a very small district, so it's hard to
Scheduling flexibility.
Our scheduling is so difficult. In a larger district, it's really easier to say what people do. But people teach across those schools. We have thought of that. So that's why we wanted to come in with what we already thought of. And we all thought of K-2 coming in too. Because we wanted to not, but if, but every single thing, you know, we thought about. We've been through a lot of renditions of how this could look. And, you know, socialization's gonna look different under this too, I hate to say. It is part of what the new normal is. Because if it's social distancing, it's just something they'll have to get used to in our schools. So what happened in the neighboring school district, when it's, when they're in front of us, we have to make sure, whatever the guidelines are, that we're doing the best with them. And if it's saying striving to six feet and we strive to, to just do what we always did, I think that we could end up being like one of those districts that, you know, that will have a big spike, possibly. But if we strive and we're not gonna be able to get six feet, but at least we show we're trying, you know, I think we'll be in a better position. I do agree with Teres. I read all those studies and not just, not just that study. There's a lot of studies. And what happened at the Ys and the YWCAs that ran throughout this whole COVID-19. They took kids, they took kids from our district and they didn't have any, they had like a 1% of students. And, you know, I watched some of them. You know, they had very creative ways to keep students apart and kids did well. Little kids do well. They don't seem to get it. There's a lot of reasons why they think that. And when they get it, they don't get very sick. Now, of course, there's those few that end up in the headlines. And that's something that we will have to educate the community because there's a lot of fear.
Well, I think there is a lot of fear. And I think that we do have, it's our duty to educate people so that they're not afraid. Well, I think there is a lot of fear and I think that we do have, it's our duty to educate people so that they're not afraid of the headlines. Because what you just said doesn't make people tune into CNN, right? If an 11-year-old has a, you know, a serious illness, that will, right? And so I think that we have to really keep reinforcing that because the one thing that COVID has also spiked hugely is a significant spike in mental illness. And we, as healthcare providers, are seeing that more and more. I, I've, I've admitted more kids for inpatient psych treatment than 100% for COVID. Because this is not a normal environment and people are very anxious.
And that's one of the reasons the, the American Academy of Pediatrics want kids to come back because they really need normalization. As much as they need education, they need normalization and they need not to fear so much. They need to not watch TV and watch the news. Everybody should like try not to watch TV and watch the news because it is very sensational as it always is.
Right. So I have just a couple more questions and then Laurie will go. Just in regards to like the common areas like library, cafeteria, gym, auditorium. I'm sure you guys are thinking about what that will look like. And if you could just make a couple comments on that.
So we are. And so part of getting K to two in is putting a grade in the auditorium. We have to know that. So part of getting our youngest kids in is doing the best with teaching in the, in the auditorium. So no room, as we see it now, unless we get more creative and start looking at other designs. Like this library will be used as a classroom. The gym will be used as, everybody's repurposing space. So we have to make it as nice as we can. And we have to work with our teachers on how to have kids feel very comfortable there. You know, if you're, how do you use multimedia? How to, you know, give kids work that they're going to be interested in and excited to come to school. Because it's going to be a shock for some kids. We can't, and, and they say we should keep kids together as much as we can. It's going to be hard in the middle school, high school because everybody has a hybrid schedule. But in the elementary school, they're very similar, but they may not, even for teachers, they may not be in the classroom that they're expecting to be in. So the more kids we want to get in, the more we're using these spaces. And, and specials or electives are on the cart where we're thinking, we haven't gotten that far to think about exactly what that looks like. More in some schools than other, others. But we need, we know that reading and math, the core subjects are really important. And, you know, for our kids, music is really important and art. So we have to figure out how to do that the best way we can.
Okay, and then how are you going to advertise, recruit for the subcommittees? Because I know people will be interested and want to.
So that letter is going to come out right after this meeting. And it's going to, it's already written. You know, it says what the subcommittees are. We're going to try to meet after the governor comes out because, so it'll be not this week, it'll have to be next week. But just know the leadership team is still meeting and they are the steering committee. But we do, we're going to advertise and people are going to have to write a reason why they picked a committee and what they can do to add something to it. Because everybody has concerns and we want to have a place as a committee about communication too. So we want to have town halls, we want to have meetings, we want to have Facebook Live. However, this communication committee thinks about it or letters, maybe we like that better, emails. We want to get people's input, but we want these to be working committees of people that are experts more than we are. So people will have to say what they bring to the committee.
Those be in-person meetings or, or haven't started yet?
You know, it's, it depends. A lot of districts are doing it by Zoom, the meetings. So a lot of districts started with the meetings instead of, we started a little differently. We were like, let's look at different plans, let's look at what's possible. So some meetings are dreaming and they haven't even measured the spaces yet. We, but they are meeting, they seem to be, I think, I think that the meetings, the committees will be small. We can meet in person also because I don't want to make them big. Their committees have problems with making decisions. But I think that a lot of people have, I had it, I was thinking of the Zoom because I just think we have a better chance of people saying they can make it. If I'm a doctor and I know I'm at work, but I just need to schedule this and I don't have to come to Tuckahoe, I think it might be easy. Because I think we're going to get a lot of professionals that want to do this. And that can really, I'm not saying people who aren't, but they need to tell us something of why they will make a difference.
Right. And then just finally, as far as like the health screening process, because there is definite controversy, even if temperature screening is worthwhile. And does it actually yield anything?
So that came out today, I think, or yesterday. So there is a whole big piece about, you know, so we're right now taking the temperature of the kids. First of all, we don't have to in terms of E S Y, it's scheduled to school year, but we're taking the temperature of the kids. That all the staff is sending their supervisors that temperature and answering four questions that, you know, and I write on the questions like, if you have any of these, don't come to school. Like, don't answer them and send them to me, obviously, you know. If you visited one of those states, if you've been exposed, if you think you have COVID, like, don't come to school. But, so it's kind of, who, who would answer that in a way that, you know, they shouldn't come to school? But there is concern, and I just read that actually, about temperature taking. Because that's not necessarily a, not everybody who has COVID-19 and they thought it was better to go with the symptoms. Plus the temperature taking, and that's why I need a pediatrician is, or a doctor or something in the medical field, is very expensive. Because we have to have people out there doing it. It's going to have, you know, getting kids in six feet apart and now you have to take their temperature. It's quick, we have the thermometers. Some districts are ordering these things that you walk through.
Well, I don't know if we should make that kind of an investment though, because I really don't, anything I've read or seen to date, it's really unimpressive. I think it alleviates people's anxiety.
Right.
And they think, well, if I'm afebrile, then I don't have COVID and I could be in the schools. I think like from a psychosomatic standpoint, there's value in it. I'm just not so sure there's real clinical value in it. And then just to follow up on that, and this is really it. Are we gonna, has it been advised that we have like some type of a policy put into place as a district for like, I know the right terminology is probably not medical legal, but to protect us as a district? Because somebody will get COVID.
Right, so in the summer, we, in E S Y, we had a disclaimer so the parents knew if, you know, because we also offer distance learning. We did that for the summer. Hopefully, we worked with our attorneys on that. There is legislation that's really hard to sue for COVID and, you know, and get anything from it, but it doesn't stop anybody, right? So hopefully, we can work with our attorneys. Everybody has a right to school. Not everybody necessarily has a right to, has to go to E S Y, so it might even be easier to do that. I think teachers should have a disclaimer or at least know upfront. And then we need to learn about the different leaves that teachers may need to take. That could cost us money by hiring, you know, substitute teachers. But we need to be aware of all this and be aware of this really soon. But the whole thing that you're saying about the medical, I have, for whoever's on that health committee, and I'm sure you do too, about eight studies that you could just go to that talks about that. And today, things came out about contact tracing, that we shouldn't be doing it. And, and there's a lot more clarity around what to do when a staff member has it than there was last year, even when, before some districts locked down. So I think that we can do this better and not necessarily invest in this or take the time and the temperatures. We don't have to do it unless in the Cuomo, New York State plan, it says we do, then we will. You know, we're not going to go against anything, but it, I, and that's why I need medical people on the committee. Because as a layperson, I tend to read these things. I might be reading them now, so I don't tend to, but a lot of our staff are reading things and they're listening to TV and they're, and they're not knowing the science. So the science people are going to be the experts on this. And real studies, not headlines.
Right, absolutely. Okay, that's it, Laurie.
Okay. So a, a lot of you asked a lot of the questions I would have asked, but let's go back to the PD for teachers and continuity of instruction. I heard something about possibly using the two, the beginning of the school year, you know, delaying the opening of the school. What would that give teachers in terms of professional development on asynchronous learning, you know, blah, blah, blah? What, what would that?
We're hoping to not go into asynchronous learning, but on synchronous learning. We're hoping that, again, we're taking a survey, so we didn't, we just took little peeks in. But it seemed, because we want to compile it, but it seems like teachers are feeling that or thinking that they need more help in the live instruction and in the technology. And thank goodness, we hired a director of curriculum instruction and technology who was a technology teacher. So that will be really beneficial and we have great technology coaches. It's something that I've been actually bragging about at board meetings. We might have to put some money forward to bring them in even sooner. We're going to have to bring in the guidance counselors sooner because this is possibly a rescheduling of, of some classes. And, but the teaching will really be about how do you use technology best? How to assess students? Like, we did do a, a, we really monitored attendance. We were one of the districts that did a great job at that, many districts did. But we really need to monitor what kids are learning and we need to make sure that we have supports for kids. I am thinking of special education being different somewhat because co-teaching in a classroom may not be the most beneficial piece. I want kids, and I'm sure you do, to succeed. They have to be able to read and they have to be able to do math. The core subjects are really important and we need to make sure that they're getting direct instruction. And it's very hard when you're home for the second day, let's say we go A B and follow it, if you haven't gotten extra support during the day in school. But that will be something that we will talk about with, with our parents, especially the, the elementary school parents. So, you know, we're re-envisioning that too because we think those special teachers did a great job and they did. It's just hard for some students that, you know, that might need more support.
So I, I, so my thinking is, you know, implementation of anything requires time, especially if it's a new, a new model, a new, you know, curriculum, whatever it is. On, on a normal, in a normal school year, right? And, you know, I, I, I think that, I think our teachers did the best job they could. And I'm, I'm just speaking in general across the nation, in, in, in all school districts. But the districts that struggled with this the most are the ones like our district who are very used to a traditional model and, and way of learning. And, you know, while I, I know they did their best, it was not the best, you know, in terms of delivery of instruction and what went on. You know, it, it because they were thrown in this pot of fire. God bless them. And what I don't want to see happen is that we then sort of wait until, you know, August or whatever. And then we're trying to just throw together PD and, and I'm sure you're wonderful. But I, I one wonder about the quality of the, the professional development. How, how would they even have time to really plan and really think through what that might look like? You're talking about, you know, new technology, when, when we were struggling with the technology that, that they had already been using, you, you know. And I, I've been here for a while now and I know that just, just the implementation of Chromebooks was not the best. I mean, that, that was, for anybody who remembers, that, that was a trip. So, so what I wouldn't want to see happen is we, that they're not, teachers and, and power professionals are not given quality and really a real good opportunity to sort of really do this in a, in a really, really good way. Now, I will say that our teachers, at least my children's teachers, and in particular my fifth grader, that her teachers were wonderful. And if I emailed and said, listen, she did not get this, is there, you know, what, what, can you meet with her again? And they, they were great to do that. And so if we have kids, you know, moving in and out of a day and then maybe a parent like me says, well, she's not getting this. And then they're trying to manage, you know, maybe following up with the student for, for more personalized instruction. I, it's just, it's just a lot and I, I don't think it's fair to, to, to further stress, stress our, our staff. You know, I, I just, I'm, I'm really concerned about that and the quality of, of, of the education that, that the kids are going to be getting.
So I think part of it is, you know, we can, and this is the way I feel about teaching. We can, and one of the things I said to them this year, just do it. And part of it is just doing it. You know, this is the time when we're going to provide support. We provided it this year. We have curriculum coaches. We have Mr. Keough here. Some teachers are further than others. There were parents in this survey and I'm not going to say who they, but they named some teachers who were, who were able to do it. Those teachers have to help other teachers. The other thing is you get better with practice and we didn't do enough live instruction. We just didn't do it. And the synchronous learning is really difficult to do. It's harder than live instruction. It is. And, you know, the teachers have been, I, I don't say that they, I think that they, I think that they learned a lot. There were teachers that were hardly using technology who now know how to use technology because they were forced into it. But when you think of the silver lining, is it really pushed people to learn new ways of teaching?
Yeah, and I was going to say that as an administrator, I mean, that is the one thing I saw. I had teachers who never used technology and the one thing that came out, and that's kind of what I said, you just need to do it. At this point, there is no option, you need to do it. And those that were not using at all, it was the best thing for them. Just by doing it, they got better. I don't think it's, it's that we, they have to get PD to learn how, they just have to do it. They were just afraid of it. So taking away that fear and them doing it, and they were working with colleagues who were doing it and we were giving support that way. So I think it's not so much that they don't know how, they were afraid to do it because they weren't used to it. But now by doing it.
They get better. The more you do anything.
With some of the kids' teachers, they weren't doing it at the beginning and then by the end, it was a different story.
And that's, and I agree. And I think for, if the coronavirus really helped us to get out of that traditional box. So I, I think in that sense, it's good, I'm all for that. However, I'm, my concern is marrying that with quality instruction. And, and the proper time, you know, given the situation, I know that's weird because it's not the, we, I mean, this is unprecedented, right? So, and, and giving them the time that they need to plan and to redo. Because just as you said, it's different doing the, any of the models that you put up unless it's every day, all day, like, like we're used to doing. So, and I say weird because I still see myself as an educator. And I, I just want to make sure that our teachers are, are given the best opportunity to, to learn and to grow and to plan and to work out some things. Like, I, I just, I just don't want, and, and I say this with the best intentions, but I, I've just been in the district now for eight years. And honestly, we're, we're doing, we always seem to be doing something new and then we have a year of, of a guinea pig situation. And it seems like my kids always sort of get caught up in that, you know. And I, it just, you know, I, it's just a huge concern that I have. I just don't want colleagues, you know, they just need a fair shot and they need this to be done in a way that is fair to them, but optimal for our students.
Right.
Well, I just want to, I do think that the professional development part of this needs to happen, like you were saying, front-loading. Because there was a, like, we talked about flattening the curve, we have to close the gap here. Because there were some teachers, like you said, were very comfortable with it. And other teachers were doing 45 minutes a week of live instruction and that was it for some of these kids. You know what I mean? So to me, that's unacceptable and I don't, going forward, and I don't want to hear about what other, what other districts are doing, whatever, because I don't care. I'm in this district and I want this district to be the best. And if we're the only ones doing, you know, complete live synchronous instruction, then I'm okay with that too. But I want to support the teachers so that they're okay with it. So they have their hands on it before they go live in a classroom. So that they can't say, well, we didn't get the professional development or we're not prepared because it's not fair. Then you're setting them up to fail.
So what I hope the boards will do is maybe at the next meeting, we'll change the schedule and move the, all the superintendent stays to the front and start our students' after-labor day and make sure, a lot of schools aren't starting until like September 9th and we're starting so early. But get in some professional. But get in some professional development for our teachers, and perhaps, if we go with the A B day, we do pick one Friday, because, just to, to work with them. I mean, I know it's not optimal, and everybody wants their kids in as much as possible, but we do have to get to be the best school at this. And I agree with Teraz or whoever said it. We have to, and parents said it. We have to, as administrators, first us, hold ourselves responsible to helping our teachers, and the expectation that the learning is synchronous, no matter what plan we have. And we heard it from our parents. I do think it'll be easier for the teachers. And then they have to be able to trust, and they do, the coaches and Mr. Kehoe once they need him, because it's not just learning, it's having coaching. Coaching is a great way to teach teachers, and it's great to watch somebody else do it or do it with you. And I know some of our coaches did that, and it really, really helped our teachers. And we just have to get bold, and we have to have expectations, and we have to monitor students' progress. And there's so much we have to do. Like, once we get, if you get on the learning committee, you'll have a chance. Because we, I don't want this to be answering all the questions, because I want people to give us their expertise, too. But that might be a good committee for you to be on.
I think, though, Dr. Goodman, our point here is, and as a board of education, the way I see it, is to set our expectations and then to provide the support for you guys as the administrators and the leads of the district to then give the teachers what they need, right? And so that's why I'm saying that now, so that we know what the expectation is, so we can, you know, achieve that.
So when I wrote my goodbye letter, and I really thank teachers a lot, I said, no matter what scenario we have, expect to be in school and running your schedule. That was the vision that I had in synchronous learning. So if we go out, if, and they're distance, and the kids are distance learning, the teacher will be here following their schedule, we'll be here and able to help them. If we have the hybrid, they'll be here, it's a full day. No more of this. You know, the kids just didn't get, they didn't get enough instruction. I will absolutely admit that. And I don't want to compare myself to any other district. I do agree with you. Let every district compare themselves to us. Because we have great teachers who are very capable, and we have great coaches that can help them, and we will learn and get better from this. Like, that's what this has to happen. We have to get better at teaching in general, doing this. And we have to do it in a way that's very supportive and not punitive. And where people can come and say, look, I don't know how to do this, and be there for them.
Right. I would say that's a big piece. It's like asking for the help. I mean, I don't see it any different. You're, I mean, I've always told, you, you teach just like as if you were in front of a classroom. It's how do I use that technology so that the kids can access it? So to me, it's no different. You teach your class the way you normally do, but what can I do with technology to enhance it and make it better? And they need to be able to ask. I think that's the fear part, it's the technology piece.
Right.
It's not, they know how to teach, but then how do I use that?
And we need to know which technologies we are using and what ones are better. And, you know, with Mr. Kehoe and with the coaches who have a lot of ideas. And we need to also call on the teachers that did a great job on it. They need to help their peers. So there's a way to, to do this. And we need to have high expectations and a lot of support. So I agree with you. And I think that's what you're saying on both levels.
Yeah.
And if we can do more staff development at the beginning of the year, really choose staff development, I think that that will be a good thing. And they're coming in, again, I would love to have them come in all summer and do this, but we have to really watch our budget. Because PPE equipment, computer equipment, extra smart boards, we have to get furniture out of the classroom and store it somewhere because we need the space. All of this is costing a lot more money than you can imagine. And there's no, there's no state aid right now for it. Whatever you read about the CARES Act, it's not going to us in that way.
Then I, to this possibility of teachers becoming sick, God forbid, and the need for substitutes, and, and not just substitutes for the classrooms, but even our power professionals for those students who need aids, you know, because they work with a specialized population. What does that look like? Having a pool, potentially a pool of substitutes and their training so that there's continuity in whatever instruction is being provided for students?
So we are reaching out to colleges, number one. Certainly, if anybody knows, any young people who graduated, just tell them to, just send, they can send their resume right to me. Hopefully, we can get some teachers in that are certified. And we're going to have to have a cadre of people that can come in and approve them and make sure that we're competitive. We may want to look at our subsalaried because everybody's going to need them. There's ways to go. We could ask for permanent subs, but again, that adds to our budget and leaves over here. But we have to do what's best. And I know that, I think Pete, didn't, John, didn't Pete go contact the colleges?
We're on.
Yeah, so K-12, we're contacting the colleges, putting things up on, because all the principals are working, like, we're a very small district. So everybody has a piece of it, and we meet weekly to go over where we are in the plan. So we are looking for more substitutes, student teachers possibly would be very beneficial, and just more people in the, in the school. You know, we have to, we might have to get very creative. And that's why we have to be able to think of all these questions and pivot as they come along.
And with the, the, because I was going to suggest that, as, if we could get, like, a pool of pre-service teachers, you know, they're, they're getting ready to be certified to come in and, and, you know, full-on, come right in, that would be great. But are they certified before? Because usually you take that, the exam after.
They're not certified before.
So you can leave them in the classroom necessarily by themselves.
They could teach under the direction of a teacher, just as a TA can also.
Right.
So it doesn't, so let's say the teacher's broadcasting, they could still, sometimes they could be with a group of kids in another room, even. We're going to do some of that, too. So it is, we could use them. We could really use them. If you have any connections with colleges, they're hard to get on the phone these days, it would be great, if anybody does. So we really need to get some people in here and give them the opportunity to learn with us. A lot of times, these young teachers really, or not yet quite teachers, they have great technology skills.
They do, because they're young. That's what happens, right? This is what they do. So, so one of the things I was thinking, like in the medical field, when the pandemic here in New York was at its peak, they rushed to certify, you know, final, you know, last year med, med students, you know, there was even talk of getting some third-year, which would have affected my, my own daughter who's a third-year. So I was wondering if there has been any talk about expediting certification of pre-service teachers or teachers who, teachers who are in a program.
I totally recommend that on my group. That's a good idea, because that is what they did with doctors.
They absolutely did that. Right, Teraz?
Yes, they did.
And maybe nurses, too. I don't know.
You know, I think they're going to loosen up the regions. I think a lot of things are going to change because they understand that this is not going to be perfect. But the best thing we can do is get our kids in school and learning.
Learning and, and that it be continuity in their instruction. So then, the little ones wearing the mask. So, maybe they will, but that, that's going to be, I mean, some of the, some, having taught kindergarten and first grade, I'm like, some of them are just learning how to use the potty really well, you know, remembering to go to the bathroom. So I'm so sure about the whole mask thing with our babies.
So the E S Y, Center School Year for the Special Education Special Class Kids. So, and this is how also I would say possibly New York State, they did come out with guidelines for it. And they said six feet apart as best you can, like, stride for six feet. And they also said, you can't force a kid to wear a mask. So there was that there, too. But our little kids in our program are wearing their mask. In fact, I think they like their mask better than not. They are so calm that I think we found a new way of teaching a group of kids with special needs. They love their mask.
Even in the office, the kids, the kids are very resilient.
They're amazing.
I agree.
And it's like, they adapt to things so easily.
That's very true.
But you would think that kids with special needs in these special classes who, like, you know, are very sensory, they're, they have hypersensitive.
Yep.
Somehow, this feeling from day one, I can't even take credit. They came off the bus, and they were all wearing masks. We were so worried about them. A couple of kids are wearing the, what's that called?
Face shields.
There's a couple of kids that are more comfortable in the face shields. Our teachers are wearing the masks, and, you know, people, I think when you get, again, it's like the new normal, but the more you're in it, the better and easier it is. And I do think that, you know, kids should be practicing wearing their masks now. I really do. The best thing, you know, is, now it's been shown to really have an effect at first. You know, we keep on hearing different things, that masks are good.
I have two more questions. One has to do with the cleaning of the school and, you know, because we have to do, I mean, I feel like we should have been doing this stuff anyway.
Me, too.
Like, I mean, right. I mean, why are we out of Clorox wipes? Don't you clean your house? I, I mean, do you, have you been using the bathroom? You know, it's like all these things I think we should have been doing anyway. But given this situation, and now all the extra, if you will, sanitizing of things, equipments, toys, particularly for your kindergarten, any preschool classrooms you have, et cetera, how is that going to impact our maintenance staff? Because that, that's a lot to do. I don't know that we have a lot of maintenance staff, and I'm, I'm concerned about them as well, because this is a huge undertaking. And now classrooms spread all over the place, and, you know, that, that's a lot. Is there a plan to address that?
That's one of the things, again, on the Operations Committee, and there are guidelines for cleaning, too, in a lot of the COVID-19 information and their schedules. And there's, and there's also, again, as Teraz knows, you know, this whole thing about it living on surfaces is not as, it is not believed to be that it lingers a long time on surfaces. So some of the things we thought may not be exactly how we think them, but we still, like, as a teacher, I would be cleaning anyway. Like, I don't have to wait for the maintenance staff, but that's up to an individual teacher, I guess. Like, I know the teachers in, in the, the school, they're, they, I was, I was always cleaning off. But we might ask parents, you know, we've ordered a lot of things, but if parents can, we'll ask them to send in sanitizer, too. And, and our staff, so what Marty, and he could do a presentation. He's looking at staggered schedules, changing them, because we don't necessarily need our custodians at certain times. We need them in when the kids are here. So we're going to make some changes. We might look at it, and again, another money thing, maybe need to have a cleaning service come in every once in a while, wearing those spray things. You know, we, we could look at it. When we're in, again, it's kind of like the cleaning people need to talk to the, the cleaning committee will have to talk to the Operations Committee, will have to talk to the Health and Safety Committee. But again, there's protocols. They're using the protocols this summer. So again, I'm glad we had summer school. It's been great for the teachers and for the staff. They're happy to be back, and the kids especially, and the parents are thrilled. We're one of the few schools that are doing it all in person. One of the only schools.
How many kids do we have in summer school?
John, how many kids do we have in summer school?
Twenty, a little over twenty.
Yeah.
A little over twenty.
And we have other kids coming that just come for, like, reading. I'm not counting those. You know, they come for an hour here and there. We also have a very robust compensatory education program. So we did promise that we were going to do something with kids who really fell behind to certain criteria. And they, those kids are getting the distance learning this summer. So we have a few things going on.
And then the equipment that you talked about purchasing, you know, like the cameras, the whole follow-around, because I know what they look like, they're like these little things. So they are expensive. So my question is, if, if the investment is made in these things as we need them now, what happens to that, those, that equipment after this is all over? And now we have all these extra cameras and, you know? Certainly, we can use some of them, but that, that's a lot. So then that becomes an issue of maybe waste, you know, in terms of funding, maybe there would have to be storage for them, et cetera. So I was just wondering if there were any thoughts about that.
So the thing with the cameras, again, I'm not promising the cameras right now.
Right, I understand.
We did look into them. But even the microphones, they still will help, you know, because we're going to be, I think what this is bringing everybody to is, like, when you go to college right now, every, everybody has their computer. Not like we weren't doing it, but we're going to be doing a lot more of it. So anything that we get will be something that we can use.
Yeah, I was going to say, my hope and vision was, this is going to change the way education is, period.
Yes, right.
So if my child's out or any student is absent from school, I can see my teacher and be with my peers every day.
Think about these kids in the hospital. Some schools already do it. It's just going to have, have access to kids, to, so it's not a, it's a good thing. But then again, you know, we have a lot of costs, you know? If we have to store the furniture that's all over the place, we're going to have to buy storage bins. I mean, like, I keep on thinking, it's like, we have a long, long list. Again, if we didn't have that list, I'd say, bring all the teachers in, they can come in, like, all summer, and we can pay them. But it's just, we might have to bring some people in, I have to say. The committees are voluntary, though, and that's how they are in most districts. So we'll see which teachers will want to be on it.
And then I had another question, and because kids ask me when they see me at Starbucks, my favorite place.
Now that you have this position, people are going to ask you all kinds of things.
Where are we with fall sports?
OK, so I did have, like, a little piece of paper there.
Oh, sorry.
I could look at it. So fall sports, so what's the name of that New York State Association, the, what's it called again, Laura? Whatever, the school sports initiation, association, they came out with different scenarios, just like we have different scenarios. And they were like, well, if we're in, if we're in minimal spread, we can play these sports, possibly. If we're in moderate, it's these sports. I could read them to you. But it doesn't mean that that's going to happen. That's their hope and dream, because they're, that's their, that's their, that's their passion. You know, something like football, even though we're pointing somebody tonight, that might not happen, something, but, you know, could happen virtually, possibly, if the board decides to do something like that. But everything costs money. And the whole thing with sports also is.
That's ain't happening.
How do you play football virtually?
Yeah.
You really can't do it virtually. So what I did last year is we didn't pay, we didn't pay our coaches virtually, again, because we're going to really have to look at how we, how we're going to educate kids. But it's going to be hard for parents, but there are some sports that can play.
It's going to be hard for kids.
Like baseball was a sport that could play. It was surprising the sports that they said. I have them written down, if you want me to go through it. I did bring it, because I knew that comment would come up.
I was asked, so I'm just, I'm, you know, I have to, I have to speak on behalf of my constituents, you know?
Absolutely. And we, and there are sports that they recommend for medium and moderate, so those could be the sports that will play for, I could, I could read them to you. I don't want to say them off the cuff, but there is, there is, there is a document that came out that mentioned different sports. Now, we are appointing coaches in the hopes that everybody can play, or somebody rethinks this, or comes up with something. We want, we want to make sure that, we have people in place in case that we can play sports, but there are some sports that they say we can play. It seems like we can play.
I also think, Dr. Goodman, we should look at maybe somehow supporting, like, a fellowship program for, like, the guidance and psychologists to get students in for that, because I do think there's going to be an aftermath of that and having more people to support the kids' mental health in the transition would be helpful.
I think that there are some kids that we don't know about right now who have experienced trauma, just even anxiety. You know, you watch, I remember after 9/11, how some kids reacted, how hard it was for them. So we do need to have places for kids to, to work out their feelings and to have, you know, maybe advisory groups or something with them and work that into their schedule. We will, and then there are some kids who just are, you know, I think just coming back to school is what's going to be a huge therapeutic piece for them. They really, I, I don't think kids realize how much they like school until this happened.
All right, we good?
Yes.
Are you guys good?
And again, it was a hard presentation. I can't tell you everything yet because we don't know anything yet. And it's a moving target, and that's why I want us to have lots of scenarios, lots of different ways we can go, because it's going to be that kind of a year. And hopefully, they'll find a vaccine. And hopefully they'll find a vaccine, they're working on it, and we will get back to the real normal. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We wait for Dr. Goodman.
I got a lot, I got a lot of stuff. I'm good, I was just trying to respect those.
Yeah, sure. Did you want to read off those sports or?
I can read off those sports that I have with me. Get people excited.
They save you a lot of emails tomorrow. Do that now.
Yeah, okay. Lots of papers in case you ask me any questions. Here's the potential scenarios for sports. Okay. This is from, I never know how to say this, New York State PHSAA. It's the Sports Association. And they say, "The following sport assessment is outlined in the reopening of school. High-risk sports that involve close sustained contact between participants, lack of significant protective barriers, and high probability that respiratory particles would be transmitted between participants. Those most likely won't happen, and it is, I'm sorry. Football is there. I know it's gonna be very sad. Wrestling, boys lacrosse, and competitive cheer. Moderate risk, sports that involve close sustained contact, but with protective equipment in places that may reduce the likelihood of respiratory particles transmission between participants or intimate, close contact, or group sports, or sports that use equipment that can't be cleaned between participants." Again, this is moderate risk if we're there. Basketball, volleyball, baseball, softball, soccer, gymnastics. So these have a chance of playing if equipment needs, but needs to be cleaned. Ice hockey, field hockey, tennis, swimming, relays, pole vault, a lot of things that we don't have. Girls lacrosse. And the low-risk sports are, which I could see playing, are individual running events, throwing events, individual swimming, golf, Alpine skiing, sideline cheer, we can do that, cross-country running. So, you know, we might want to rethink even some of the things that we offer. And then they have different.
Have to expand those programs more. Kids are gonna want to do different things.
Then they have different potential scenarios and how we will do it. But that's just something that came out. It's not written in stone. It was just a guideline.
Changes every day.
And it changes every day, it really does. I, it probably already changed, but I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing I did want to say, because one of the things of what worked, and I want to say this over and over again, you know, regardless of how hard it was, was teachers. And the parents really were complimentary of the teachers, mostly. They really were. So I think that it was a very hard time and we kept on being told we were opening. So we ran and then it was like, we're gonna open on the 25th. And then we ran again, we opened in April. It was a very hard year. This year, we know how it's gonna be. We've been through it. We know our parents like live, we know our kids like live. We know we need to give kids, parents staff development. We might have to do something on a Friday here or there. We know we have to do coaching. We know we have to put the staff development days at the beginning of the school year so teachers have time. I hope teachers, you know, teachers are like this, they're looking at it now. I mean, I know I was a teacher in the summer where I wasn't waiting ever. I wanted to be ready. And we have a lot of teachers like that too. We really do. And if they know what's coming and what to expect, I have great faith in our teachers. We do have great teachers in the district.
I do have to say with the teachers, I have to say one thing. I enjoyed being able to like hear them and seeing them on video. It kind of made me understand like even, saw the relationships my kids have with them and see their personalities. So that part was kind of fun. I was like, I feel like I got to know them a little.
See where that weird parent stalked the classes in the background? You were that one?
Yeah, I ran into one of the teachers and I was like, oh my God, I saw that video. She's like, oh my God, you watched it? I go, it's so interesting, I loved it. But it was just nice to see, even when they were doing the live things and hearing them talk to the kids and how they interact, I thought it was really nice to see that on the relationships they have with them.
The last comment I'll make on that, because I know we need to move on, is I think the teachers should be commended, obviously. And I think there was a lot of compliments about the teachers. But I will say to the comments that I made earlier, a lot of that, I think, was understanding of how quickly they had to adapt to this. But I think we can't get lulled into complacency because I think as more months pass, and now we go have a whole summer, we get in September, October, the tolerance or the expectations are gonna raise, right? So I think a lot of slack, and I don't want to call it slack in a negative way, but there was a lot of, rightly so, a lot of slack given to teachers to say, hey, this is a tough and quick adjustment. But I think the expectation, rightfully so, will start to rise now that we've gone, now we're four or five months into this.
Right.
So I think, you know, that, you know, latitude will start to shorten.
I think so too. And I think parents.
Yeah, I think we need to acknowledge the fact that one of the concerns of the teachers in the past or criticisms of us as a district has been that we haven't given good professional development. And we need to make it very clear that that's our priority, that this board 100% will support and give them what they need to be successful. Because part of success is like filling your toolbox, right?
Right.
Right. Without a doubt, I think it's very clear that this board will support any type of professional development.
And I think in the end, it has to be expectations. And it does come from administration, that the expectation is, you know, last year we went back and forth and how many minutes and some teachers were doing this and some teachers were doing that. Clearly, it's gonna be synchronous, no matter how we go, it's gonna be a full day. Because teachers will have time to figure out their childcare, but we have to realize that our community also needs childcare. And hopefully, the communities where they live will give their kids what they need to. And we're all in the same boat, we're all in it together, and we're gonna do it.
Right. One last thing, I love the front-loading because that's a huge concern for me, for them, and ultimately our kids, because it affects them directly. But also that it's ongoing PD, because some of the things that we may front-load may not actually work out. And we know this happens and those of us who are educators kind of start and then we don't know what happens to it. It really needs to be ongoing so that there can be those, you know, fixes, you know, the fix and fine tuning.
Absolutely. And that's why we're gonna need.
Building in that time for them.
Time during the year to do it. And I hope parents understand that, you know, with this, if we go with the AB, that some of those Fridays will be used for staff development and that teachers will have their coaches and Mr. Kehoe in their classrooms to help them. And they could help each other too, because we have some teachers who are really super at this.
And I was gonna say collaborative, having time to work together because nobody learns better than you do from a colleague who's in the same boat.
Absolutely. Professional learning committees is something that we're looking at doing.
All right, let's move on. Good discussion, I'll show you many more discussions on this throughout the summer.
Yeah.
So we'll move on to the next item, which is comments from the Assistant Superintendent for Business. Ms. Lee, you have anything?
No, we're just really, we're working in the business office to prepare school for the fall, the cleaning that we normally do, and then some of the summer construction, the purchasing, all of the above, and we're just continuing as needed.
Okay.
Great.
Next is comments from the President of PTA. Do we have anything handed in or?
Not today, she's just starting. But we welcome her to the position.
Right.
And I'm sure she also needs to say at the next.
It's Susan Miele.
Yeah, Susan Miele.
Susan Miele, Susan Miele.
She's actually welcomed, I'll introduce her today. I'm looking forward to working with her. And she's very excited. One of the things that she said to me is that she really wants to help the school through this COVID-19 crisis. And, you know, again, we will reach out to other people, like the foundation and see, the PTA for sure, to see how that they can assist us with this. And she wants to help us, which is great.
Great. Okay, we look forward to working with her as well. Next is comments from the Tuckahoe School Foundation. Obviously, there's nobody here, is there any writing comments or anything?
No.
Okay, all right. So that brings us to our first recognition of the audience. Our only audience member today is Ms. Halloran. But before you get up, and I don't want to take much time on this, but being that this is the first meeting of the new school, of the new year, and it's sort of a new board, I just wanted to reiterate that we are going to continue to enforce that public participation in board meetings policy that we started to enforce in the middle of last year. It's a policy, it's already, it's been on the books for many years. It's a policy that just about every other district has. And if anybody wants to read it, I won't, we kind of went lengthy, so I don't want to read the entire policy. But it is policy number 1230, if anybody wants to read it. But just to key in on a couple of highlights, we are gonna be asking those that want to speak to fill out the sign-in sheet when they come in, so that we know ahead of time who's gonna be speaking. We are gonna limit comments to three minutes. If somebody has something more they like to speak about and want to get some permission to do, go longer than that, we can accept that on a case-by-case basis. But three minutes is the goal. And of course, we want to keep the comments professional and avoid any obscene language or anything that's unprofessional. And we also want to avoid in public session, talking about individuals, individual staff members or students, of course. So again, if you want more details about that, you can read the policy. But I just wanted to reiterate that in the past, in the last year or so, we weren't really enforcing this policy. About middle of last year, we started to enforce it. And it's my intention as the new board president to continue to enforce that policy. Okay? Go ahead, Allison.
Okay. Can I just ask one question that's not about what I originally, had to do with Ms., with Dr., sorry, Dr. Goodman's presentation? That wasn't my previous plan, so could I just have a little tiny?
Sure, I mean, there's a long list of people who speak, Allison, so.
It's gonna be very quick. I noticed on one of the slides that it said like approximately 450 families responded. Was that, was that actually families who responded or was it 450 responses? Because I know like for myself, because you had to put the student's name, I did it three times for each of my three kids. So I just, I'm not sure if it was 450 families or?
From the perspective of 450.
Okay, so you got 450 responses, not from families.
I think we got more since then. It was 475 then.
Right.
But it didn't, but it didn't change it.
Right. I mean, it's still a great, it's still a great turnout, I just wanted to.
Got all these extra ones and it was the same thing. So that kind of makes me think that people are thinking the same way.
The survey is still open?
No.
No, it's closed now.
Because we really wanted to get it done. But we're gonna look at what it was by grade span, by school, see if we need more information.
No, I agree with that. I mean, originally, I was like, why am I doing this three times? And as I was filling it out, I realized that I have different concerns for a fifth grader versus an 11th grader and actually was in favor of that. Okay, so. Two agenda items that concerned me that I wanted to bring up tonight. The first is I noticed that we are entering into a contract with Aramark Food at a 1.4 CPI increase, which I'm a little concerned about. I also noticed that a few meetings back, a few meetings back, we did something similar with our bus company where we went for a cost of living increase. I strongly feel that due to the uncertain state of our funding, many times in this past presentation, you mentioned that we are having, we will have financial struggles, that we do not enter into any contracts with any vendors that are more than what they were last year in the 1920 year, unless there is an increase of service. And so for that, I mean, I don't know if we're allowed to do this, but I really would like to see you guys table that and go back to Aramark and say, absolutely not. Tuckahoe School District is not entering into any contracts this year unless there is an increase of service. Giving a company just a cost of living increase is absolutely ridiculous in this financial crisis. And I have a really, I have a big problem with it.
Ms. Lune, you want to address that or, what, any comments about that?
Sure. I mean, in terms of the bus contracts, this was a negotiation that we went into for many, many weeks in order to reach an equitable decision with our bus vendors so that we could renegotiate what we were paying them in the spring. And we wanted to also ensure that we would have bus transportation in the fall. And this was what we did end up negotiating, that we would reduce the cost in the spring as well as offer them a, which the state allows, a new contract in the fall at the CPI, which is the May CPIU. And that's typically what is offered. The same is true with Aramark. They are, we could go back and ask them to reduce their CPI. We typically renew at CPIU because there is a cost of living involved in, or an inflationary factor involved in their services over the year. We do, at this late stage in time, we do run the risk that we may have no vendor in the fall. But it's something that the board could discuss and see what they prefer to do.
I mean, honestly, these are not typical times by any means. And we should not be giving typical increases.
I think it's a good point.
We should really be arguing with companies that absolutely not. Everyone knows what the governor did and the changing of his budget quarterly. We should really be pushing back on our vendors and telling them that we are not interested in increasing. And they should be willing to give to us. Our bus company, we paid them 40% for services that were not rendered, which, by the way, an article came out yesterday that our bus company got a million dollars from the government. So they didn't really need us to help them. And we should not be in the business of just helping vendors for goodwill. We have people in this community who are out of work, who are not going to be able to pay their basic expenses. We need to be very financially responsible and considerate of what we're doing and how we're spending our money. And the goal is to get our kids back. And that is going to cost a lot of money. And we shouldn't be making any decisions other than spending the money to get the kids in this building safely. My other issue is that I am extremely disappointed in the recommendation for an interim AP and athletic director. It seems to me like we are filling our open positions with interns rather than taking a chance on a permanent hire. We have a part-time interim director of special education. And while she's very good at her job, it's still just a temporary replacement, which next June will put us in a scenario looking for somebody else. Our business official has agreed to only stay on through June. And so again, we just have a one-year Band-Aid. And now we have our new interim AP that we're looking for. Initially, I was very worried and not in favor of the administration change for the middle school and high school. But after many conversations with Dr. Goodman, I began to embrace the change and really welcome it. I now feel that maybe this was put forward a little too quickly and that my fears of too much too soon in an uncertain time are now actually coming to fruition. I know that you guys may see it as it's only one year, but some kids don't have a year to wait. And I look at my oldest son, who had a different principal for every year of his middle school year. And then we switched schools because of that constant change. And then we came back and now he's gonna be a junior with yet another interim type of scenario in administration. And I also see my sixth grader starting on that same pattern of not having a permanent spot in an administrative role when it comes to leading our schools. I was also dissatisfied with the way the athletic department was run this past school year. And I'm just very surprised and disappointed in the recommendation for an interim once again.
Okay.
Okay, so let's not talk, you know, when there's one person. We're really not supposed to talk about personnel?
It's really, I'm disappointed that we're putting an interim.
Okay, so I think that that's, just we need to be careful about that because that is our policy. Just so that you know, we did interview for both of those positions. We got close with special education and because of COVID, people and because of their fear that we are going, you know, it's very hard to move right now. They'd rather stay where they are. That's just the way it is. It's hard to find administrators that will move during this. I mean, we got close, we had people interviewing for all of those positions. I believe that the people in those positions will do a good job. I think they're very experienced. And, you know, again, we have, as I said before, Mr. Kehoe is a middle school person. He will help out a lot. I am a special ed person. I have and will help a lot, and I am. And I want to get the best people in those positions. And sometimes you just have to wait a while. I feel like with Mr. Kehoe, we did that. And we just need to continue to work towards getting great people so that we keep people for a long time. So I know you're disappointed.
Couldn't we keep interviewing instead of settling for an interim? I mean, it's a whole nother year of an interim. It's just been interim after interim after interim in this district.
Anybody who's looking right now is concerning, it's July. It's hard. We had to wait till we got approved from the state. Actually, we finally got the definite, complete approval today. You know, we had to change some things and had nothing to do with the, it was something in stated of the way we were. do with the, it was something in state ed of the way we were listed, but it, you know, it all, it, we don't have the time. I don't, I can't imagine finding somebody right now. I tried. I was interviewing just yesterday.
And have we considered offering to possibly Mr. Stiefel, who has been here, not to be the principal, but to be the AP?
Again, we're not going to talk about individual staff. I think it, I think it's a very slippery slope.
Okay. It is very disappointing, I have to say. I was totally on board with your change. This is really, really disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. I think I think your point about the increased contracts is a very good one.
Can I just say?
So when we get to that point of the, but.
Maybe we'll wait till later in the meeting, but I do, I was thinking after I spoke that there is one other point I'd like to make about Aramark. Although we did provide them with a 1.4% CPI increase, Aramark does guarantee us a profit. So it's not, and we do not spend any district money on our food services program. It's a totally self-funded program with a guaranteed profit. So I just did want to point that out.
Okay. So when we get to that point of agenda, we'll have some discussion about that.
Okay.
And then we'll decide. Okay, so that brings us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda today is quite lengthy. It's about 51 items, I believe. So, yeah. But we'll go ahead and adopt all those at one point. We, as a board, have looked through everything on the consent agenda, and we've discussed anything that was personnel-related in executive session, so we're prepared, I think, to vote. So do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
Teres, one. Laura, a second. Any discussion at all about the consent agenda? Anybody want to add a discussion? All right. Okay. Root? All in favor? All in favor? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Gerald.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Because I'm new here, so I don't know the intricacies very good. Thank you.
Yes, understood. Okay. So now we'll move on to business of the board. First item on business of the board is adopted amended policy. So this is, so resolved to adopt amended policy is 5500, 5500 dash R, and 8635. Do I have a motion? Teres, Laura, a second. All in favor?
Same.
Okay. Next is approve pupil personnel agreements. We resolve to approve the service agreements A through H as listed below. Resolve to approve a contract agreement with educational and management services for state aid claim services at a rate of $500 per month, not to exceed $6,000. B, resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Achieve Beyond for therapy services for the 2020-2021 school year at rates as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $5,000. C, resolve to approve a consent agreement with Weshes to Therapy Solutions for therapy services for the 2019-2020, this must be 2020-2021.
Consultant.
Consult. Sorry. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Weshes to Therapy Solutions for therapy services for the 2019-2020 school year at rates as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $325,000. But I assumed that meant 2020-2021. It must be a typo.
Yes, it does mean.
Right, okay. Resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Dr. Venus Strober for psychological and educational assessments for the 2020-2021 school year at a rate of $325 per hour, not to exceed $10,000. E, resolve to approve an agreement with Horizon Healthcare Staffing for the 2020-2021 school year for substitute nurse services at a rate of $56 per hour for RNs and $43 per hour for LPNs, not to exceed $50,000. F, to resolve to approve a consultant agreement with Cyclone Industries for billing Medicaid eligible services for a fee based on 15% of federal Medicaid revenues that the district is entitled to retain based on approved claims for services provided to special education classified students beginning July 1, 2020, ending July 30, 2021, not to exceed $10,000. G, to approve, resolve to approve an agreement with ABC Tutoring Agreement for homebound instruction services for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, at a rate of $60 per hour, not to exceed $30,000. And finally, H, resolve to approve a contract agreement with Contrarus Translation and Interpretation Services and Company for translation services for the 2020-2021 school year as per the attached rate sheet, not to exceed $5,000. Do I have a motion? Teres? Cynthia, second. Discussion? All in favor? All right. Number three, approve a purchasing agreement. Resolve to approve the purchasing agreement with ed data services in the amount of $3,000, $3,010 for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Laura, Teres, second. Discussion? All in favor? Number four, approve a capital project accounting agreement. Resolve to approve an agreement with Fiscal Advisors and Marketing, Inc. for capital project accounting and state aid services for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 20th, sorry, June 30, 2021, at a rate of $210 per hour. Do I have a motion? Cynthia? This is a weird setup. I can't hear. Teres, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Teres, you're in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Making sure. Number five, approve a contract extension. Resolved to extend the contracts with the following lowest responsible bidders for the 2020-2021 school year at the same rates as 2019-2020. Electric bid, Scotty, $6,635. Air conditioning and refrigeration services, John Henry's Heating Ventilation Air Conditioning Incorporated, $22,727. Minor carpentry and repairs, Mohegan Park Company, $37,570. Roofing, J Salvatore and Sons, $0. Heating services, Oilco Heating Corp., $46,695. Plumbing, William J. Bell Plumbing and Heating, $9,567. Snow removal services, JMA Landscape, $5,400. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, discussion. Ms. Lou, how is, why is roofing $0? How is that possible?
These are all.
Well, it's a great deal, but how is that possible?
No, no. What you're looking at were the, what we actually paid in 2019-20.
Okay.
So just to give you an idea of what we had to spend, and this year, luckily, we had no roofing needs. So this is a contract that's based on time and materials, so that we bid it out and we use the contractor with the lowest rates so that the district can call in a contractor whenever needed for emergency repairs or small repairs.
Got it. Okay. Okay, all in favor? All right. Number six, extend the contract. Resolve to approve the one-year extension of the food services contract with Aramark Educational Services LLC through 2020-2021 school year at a 1.4% CPI. Do I have a motion? Teres, Laura, second. Discussion. So this is one of the items that Ms. Halloran brought up, but you've already commented on it. So your take on it is that it's really not an increase to the school district. It's an increase to to the pay for for services that essentially students are going to pay, essentially, right?
Right. What it provides for is Aramark to increase their cost per meal by 1.4%. It's generally reimbursed by either the students or the federal government for the students that are on free and reduced lunch. It does take away a little bit of the differential between those two, depending on what the reimbursement rate is. However, Aramark does guarantee a minimum profit of $20,000 per year to the district, and we typically receive more than that.
I will say, just to, what Ms. Halloran did bring up, which is, I think we should at least discuss, is that people are losing their jobs. So 1.4%, and they may not qualify for school lunch because maybe the other parent is still employed, but cash flow is going to be tight.
But we haven't raised the cost of the lunches.
Oh.
So the lunch cost to the student will.
So where's the 1.4%? Sorry.
That's the differential between what we get reimbursed either by the student who pays the full price, which we're not raising, or what the federal government reimburses us. So the differential of that, what we receive back from either the student or from the federal government, may shrink slightly. However, we do hope to get increased sales, which is what we're working with with Aramark. And in addition, we are guaranteed a profit. So we do not expend any district funds on the lunch program.
And so there's no extra cost to the student?
Correct. We're not raising the cost of lunches to students at all.
So if the percent increase was zero, the impact would be a higher profit?
Correct, which would go into our school lunch fund, which we have a large stockpile of anyway, that we're saving towards renovating the cafeteria hopefully this year.
Right, and those funds couldn't be used for anything else anyway.
Correct, correct. So there's no additional cost to families for the lunch program. There's no decrease in services or quality because that's contractual in terms of what they provide to the students in lunches. And it's down to the type of meats they can serve and the amounts and ounces per portion. And so we did agree to Aramark to provide them with a cost of living increase because their costs have gone up.
Are they going to improve the quality with them?
We work on that every year.
The quality is questionable.
We work on that every year.
That's a discussion we've had before, and it's a discussion we probably need to have again, because I think we all are somewhat dissatisfied with with the quality. But I know we've had this, it's a lengthy discussion because I know that they're, unfortunately, they were the only bidders, I believe, last time.
And that's another, right, point, that we could go out to rebid if Aramark refused. We only got, we rebid it last time a year ago, and only two companies responded. And then the company, the second company that responded withdrew their bid, so we only had Aramark as the sole bidder.
Yeah, I believe in times that we've explored this before, I think in order to make a significant improvement to the quality of food, we're going to have to do something bold and different than this type of scenario. I think, you know, it's a bigger discussion, I think, in terms of what we want to do with the cafeteria, so. All right, well, in light of those explanations, I think it was a really good point that Ms. Halloran made, but I think the fact that it's not going to cost our students any additional money, and it's not going to cost the district any additional money in real dollars, and I'm inclined, I'm inclined to go along.
That's why we have a large account, which we're hoping to use when we do improvements at the cafeteria. So we're actually, we're actually profiting every year from Aramark.
That's correct.
So, so my question is, did we, so did the district receive any monies back for the fact that we haven't been serving lunch to students now, except for those students who qualified and needed those services?
We're only, I'm sorry.
That, you know, after, when the school closed down.
We don't receive money back, however, we don't pay anything either. We're only paying for the lunches that we provided to these students during the closing of the schools, and we are reimbursed by the state and federal government for those foods because that was for the free and reduced students.
So I'm with Pete on that. I feel like we keep going around on this merry-go-round with the same company. And in light of the situation, I think most companies might be more open to being more open to doing better so that they don't lose business. And I also think those companies who are suffering because of this situation that we find ourselves in might be more willing to bid for, you know, a district like ours. So the food is terrible. My kids, like, I threaten them, like, you're going to have to buy food to make sure that they do the right thing that they need to do for lunch. They're like, no, because that's how awful it is. So while that's a good little trick for me to get them, you know, to do what they need to do, I just think that we need to be in a different position. I mean, I've been here for eight years, and every year this comes up, and we're still talking about the same stuff. It's time to jump off the merry-go-round.
Yeah, I think from what I've learned from this, I think, in order to do something different, and I don't know if the current situation with COVID changes the economics of it, but I know in the past, we're going along wrong, is that we're not really a district that's attractive to a lot of these food servicing companies because we're so small.
I know, right.
But I think the way to do anything significant is that we have to kind of change the entire model that we're using, because this this current model that we're using does come along with aid, federal aid. It does keep the cost down for our lower-income children. So there's a lot of dynamics to it, and it's not an easy fix. But it seems like in order to fix it, it would have to be to kind of change the entire model that we're using, which I'm not sure is is possible. I definitely think we need to discuss it some more.
Yeah, definitely. So did we make a lot less money off of it? Like, just what Lori said, like, our profit from going into the school lunch fund, was there a significant?
I'll have to take a look as we close out our books, because this year was very unusual in the sense that we didn't serve lunches for three months.
Right, so I'm wondering how much that was going to impact.
So that's a big percent. I mean, every lunch we serve, we also get a profit in addition to any guaranteed profit.
Okay.
So we'll have, we'll know that in about a month or so.
Okay.
Okay, so all in favor? Okay. Number seven, approve an athletics merger. Be resolved upon the recommendation of interim director of athletics and the superintendent of schools. At the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a sports merger with the Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity boys ice hockey for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Okay.
Approve an athletics merger. Be resolved upon the recommendation of interim director of athletics and the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a sports merger with the Bronxville Union and Free School District for varsity swimming for the 2020-2021 school year. Motion? Teres, Laura, second. Any discussion?
Yep. I think we should change it to the superintendent of school, since we're not having athletic director, even though the assistant.
It says interim athletic director.
Okay, he's interim. We say interim assistant principal, but he's also doing the athletic director.
Oh, I see. His title now is interim assistant principal. Okay.
So, but it's okay, just so that we don't have to come back and fix it.
Okay. All right, so, because we have one more like that, so I'll just read it the way it's written. Okay.
Do they have to reread it?
No, we're actually going to stick with the way it's written, right? Dr. Goodman?
Assistant, I think we should say assistant principal of athletics and student life.
Okay. Do you need me to read that over again, Robyn?
Could you please? Thank you.
Okay, we'll do. Okay, so once again, number eight. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the interim assistant principal and the superintendent of schools. At the Board of Education of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves a sports merger with the Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity swimming for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Again. Teres, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Number nine, approve an athletic merger. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of interim assistant principal and the superintendent of schools. At the Board of Education for the Tuckahoe School District, Union Free School District hereby approves a sports merger with the Bronxville Union Free School District for varsity girls softball for the 2020-2021 school year. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Number 10, extend the contract. Resolve to approve an extension of the summer transportation contract with Royal Coach Lines for the period of July 1, 2020 through August 30, 2000, that must be 2021, it says 2019, that must be a typo, at the, at a total anticipated cost of $22,196.38. Do I have a motion? Teres, Laura, second. Discussion?
I think it's just the summer, for the period, summer training.
Summer transit, so it's July, sorry, so it says July 1, 2020, August 30. It says 2019, but it must be 2020.
It should be 2020. It's just this summer.
I think you should change that.
Yeah.
Oh, so it's through July 30, 2020, not 2021?
It's July 1, 2020, through August 30, 2020.
Correct.
Right, for the summer, yeah.
This is a contract, a contract that provides just the summer, the summer transportation for our special education program for the summer. It's an extension of our last summer's transportation contract, and there's no contractual increase to the rates. It's just based on the buses that we run, based on the students that we're sending.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Pointed attorney, number 11. Resolve to appoint Kenan Bean as board attorney for the 2020-2021 school year for a retainer fee of $65,000 for general counsel work, which shall include 370 hours of service and a retainer fee of $27,000 for the negotiation services, which shall include 155 hours of service. Anytime spent on matters that fall outside either retainer arrangement will be billed at $225 per hour for services performed by attorneys and $125 per hour for services performed by paralegals. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Laura, any discussion?
No.
No? All in favor? All in favor? Okay. That brings us to personnel. So as usual, we have all personnel on one motion. So be it resolved to approve personnel actions, item A through J. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. That was A through J. All right. So this brings us to our second recognition of the audience, but we don't have any audience members. So I think that's fair to say that we don't have any. I know. I don't think they're considered audience, though. If you like to say something, you're welcome to. All right. So that brings us to H, which is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Cynthia, Teres, second. All in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll see you next time.